Good evening, everybody. I'm Rob Greenstein. Welcome to the town board meeting of Tuesday, November 12th. We are going to start with our work session on double pole legislation. We have a lot of people I see from the utilities here ready to get in the hot seat. So Ed, do you want to start it?
Well, you know, this is legislation that the board considered a couple of years ago. It is not novel. We are past the can we do this? Yes, we can. That was a question that was raised and answered. Other municipalities have similar legislation. My understanding is that so the question really isn't can we is should we? Or maybe the question is why shouldn't we? And I think the board has questions. I know representatives from the utilities are here and hopefully they answer them. So I that's where we are. And I would leave it to you or I'm not sure who wants to start, but.
I'll start. Yeah, well before we start, can we just go around and introduce ourselves?
I'm just gonna suggest that that might be helpful, so. I guess I'll start. I'm Jane Solnik, I'm with Con Edison. I'm director of regional community affairs for Con Edison specifically focused on Westchester County.
I'm Luke Shugango, corporate affairs manager.
Kevin Bradley, manager of electric operations.
Paul Smith, manager of the joint use group.
Edward Sherwin, law department.
Arda Young from Verizon, the area manager for northern Westchester.
Great.
Les Carlton from Verizon, I'm the local construction manager covering this area.
Kay Curry-Harrell from Verizon, engineering manager.
John Sprague from Verizon, I'm the outside plant engineer for Capco.
Ed, you want to go around?
Also Ed Phillips, one of the town attorneys for Newcastle.
Jill Shapiro, town administrator.
Ivy Poole, council member.
Lisa Kats, deputy town supervisor.
Jeremy Slade, council member.
Paula McCosco, council member.
Lori Casco, assistant to town administrator, Jill Shapiro.
Christina Hayes, tax receiver and town clerk.
Jim Carroll, chief of police.
I'll start, I have no problem. So we brought up this double pole legislation because there were a lot of double poles in this town. And we actually had an intern go around and do an inventory of all of them. And that was almost two years ago. And well, I would say definite progress has been made particularly by Con Ed in terms of getting their wires moved to new poles or new poles getting in. There's still, I think, 200 or something like that outstanding, I can't remember the exact number. But more importantly, even when they've done their work, the other utilities have not taken their equipment off the old pole and put it on the new pole. And our concern is primarily related to safety. And we kind of feel that this notice has been out there for almost two years. And we're sort of wondering why things aren't moving any faster. Yeah, and there is a safety concern as Chief Carroll will show you. I mean, we have pictures of areas specifically where there's really a problem because they're blocking sightlines or they're just in really bad spots. And while Con Ed definitely has made progress, we have seen, you know, we know some of them are still Verizon that are waiting for the lines to be taken off those double poles. And so we want to talk about what we can do better and if we should be enacting this legislation.
So I guess I'll kick it off from our end. First of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity because I know that you met a couple of weeks ago and agreed to give us the opportunity to look at the list and go over it. So I think I speak on behalf of Verizon as well that we appreciate you giving us this opportunity to look to take that time and look at it and to come back. We have, as was pointed out, I want to say it was 2017 when we came in and talked about the double pole legislation. At that point, I think we were 500, 500 plus possibly. But the exact number, I couldn't quote it right now, that we had determined were double poles in the community. At this point, we have progressed as was mentioned and we do appreciate that working together, we've progressed and brought that number down. We did take the list that is, I think, is being discussed at this point that I want to say was 200 or something that you're looking at. And we have looked at it from the perspective of Con Edison. Verizon, I understand, has looked at it as well. And we've come down to, I think we've made progress because we're coming up with a number of about 57 poles that are out there as double poles now.
Your number is your poles or poles in general?
Poles in general.
Is that Newcastle poles are your numbers or is that any pole in Newcastle whether it's a state road or a county road?
Clarify for me, it's Newcastle poles.
Right.
The town of Newcastle.
It doesn't matter whether it's a Newcastle road or a town road, it's a Newcastle pole.
So whether you're saying whether it's county, whether it's state, whether it's local, you're saying 57. Is that consistent with what we have? I thought we had far more.
No. So I think that maybe, I may be speaking out of school, but the list that you had, I think, might have been an older list. And several of them have been removed since that list was issued.
Very possible. So we used our own staff to take and create this and it took two full-time staff members quite a long time to assemble it. You know, one driving, one, you know, estimating where the poles are, cross references, stuff like that. One of the things that we've been at a bit of a disadvantage about is that we're not privy to the engine list.
I know.
And so a lot of what we know is from driving the roads and certainly anecdotal information. But without actual, we don't have the manpower to go back and check this on a regular basis.
Not yet.
It's my understanding that the utilities are required to update engines and they have a certain amount of time within which to do it. I have to tell you that the engines list that was shared with us had significantly more than 57 poles. And just anecdotally, just driving through town, I'm thrilled that you're telling me that. I'm surprised. It seems like an awful lot more than that. If you drive up King Street, King Street alone has 13 double poles from the intersection of King and Greeley to 117.
So I don't know that you will want to take the time here from your board meeting to go through it. But so that you know independently, Con Edison reviewed the list and Verizon reviewed the list, not together, independently. We only talked right now in the hallway just before we came in.
So you got to.
And our numbers are at, we may be a number off, but we're at that.
Pretty. Do you have? Do you have your updated list with the locations?
With the locations?
Yes.
We do. Because we're standing, I hope you don't mind me speaking, you should chime in wherever you want. But Con Edison has like 17 poles at this point. But we've broken it down that we have 17, it looks like Verizon has 20. But then we have the Altis, the Crown Castle, the people like that. We have it, and by the time you do it all, that's where we get to the 57. We could go item by item with you.
I don't think we have to do that.
If you want, at some point, I don't know that you want to do it at this meeting, but we can do that.
What I'm curious about, I don't know if you keep this statistic, I would assume that after we considered introducing this legislation, it put a fire under the proverbial backside of the service providers to get out and take care of the poles. And then as time goes by, people by the natural order of things do other things and get busy. So I'm wondering how much you did in that first six months to a year, taking into mind the seasons. And then subsequently, when we consider bringing this up again, did that spark it once more to get things moving? So how many have you done in the past, you know, three months, for example? Because like Jill said, I see poles and Chief Carroll has seen poles. So is it us prodding you by potentially introducing legislation that makes it happen? And that shouldn't be the situation. So do you have statistics that can show, not tonight, when you removed these poles?
We can get that information.
We can get that information, but the 500 plus poles that we've talked about in 2017, they were not, they're not like done in the last three months. They've been, yeah, we were down dramatically. I think we did, what, a couple of poles, somebody commented.
I think we still had, I think we were looking at 17 or 18.
Right now?
No, about a month ago.
Yeah.
Do you, Jane, do you have that list? Could you share it with us now? That's not it, that's just a summary, that's not as useful to us because we actually have.
No, 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 that's what I'm saying. This is, I'm, we're happy to sit and go one by one, but I don't know that you would do that.
I don't think we need to do that today, but I think what would be valuable for us is to be able to do sort of a spot check. So if you're saying there's 57 left and we're saying there's 200 left.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that list that Jill had provided us, I don't know, a month ago or so.
Oh, that's what.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that, that can, is the list that we went back with.
Well, no, this is what we were looking for.
But we also looked at the list that's on engines as well.
Yeah.
This is the one I'm looking for.
Can I see your spreadsheet and can I see if I could do a database lookup and match the poles up in any way so that we don't have to actually physically do it and I can identify the discrepancies?
Yes, yes. Sure.
But I think some of the discrepancies may have to be done actually physically because even it may be taken care of and we just haven't updated this list.
Yeah, so I mean, it's sort of hard for us to.
It is hard for you.
To tell at this point, yes.
Yes, I can do it on pole number. So if you give this to us in digital phone, in digital format, I can do a match of our database and your database.
Sure.
And then we can find out where our discrepancies are. And then we can have somebody just go in and double check that maybe, you know, either one or the other database needs to be updated.
And if I may, if I can interject and talk a little bit about the Verizon process over the last several years. So, you know, outside of getting that letter, internally at Verizon, we had a big push at the executive level to address double woods. It throughout, you know, our footprint, which includes Westchester Forest. So what the program was, was to, you know, for pushing engineering, you know, that would be us and our construction partners on the operations side to start aggressively dealing with the double wood issue throughout our footprint. Because we knew, not just because of legislation, but, you know, we knew that that was a growing problem. So we proactively started to have this initiative to go through our double woods in this community. So, you know, the list that, you know, I was looking at from our end was, I believe, the spreadsheet that was created by the intern back in 2017. And I think one of the iterations of that spreadsheet, you know, we saw, I think it had about 348 poles on that list. And just to kind of give you a number of how much progress we collectively made because, you know, this involves, as you know, the partnership between Con Ed, Verizon and other utilities. Just because we have that process. On the Verizon end, we often look like we are the holdup because we're at the very end of the process unfortunately. So, you know, to, even for myself, when I first started, you know, in this job, when I looked at the pole and I saw all these lines, I didn't know who was on, you know, what the procedure was, what the process was. So, you know, Con Ed followed by CATV and the other third parties that are involved, and then we're last to go. So looking through that process, you know, all of that 348, we completed combined 255 poles off that list. Right, so we're talking about over 70% from that original list that I believe we're referencing from 2017. So I think we've made progress. And from outside of that spreadsheet, we've also had, from a Verizon perspective, that initiative that was being pushed by the executive level to handle the double woods outside of that list.
Can I ask you a question? Why is it 100%? Like why, why should we be satisfied with 70% at this point?
I wouldn't say that you should.
Because we're talking about legislation where we'd be asking for the activities to be completed within 90 days, right? So, you know, it's been two years, why, why is 70% a good thing? I mean, I think if there's 57, there's still 57 and they, they are a substantial safety and concern for the town.
And I understand, you know, your perspective, you know, and I would say, you know, not to make excuses for us. You know, if they are high priority, and I think Con Ed would agree, if there were line of sight issues on a certain, you know, pole, double wood that you see out there that you feel like, you know, is a safety hazard for the community, please let us know and, you know, we would jump on those as priority.
Well, I would say there's 57. I mean, you know, they're either a line of sight issue or there is an issue with, you know, upcoming winter storms and the hazards that the aging poles create there. I mean, you know, I don't, I don't think that 57 is an acceptable number to have gotten to, you know, anyway.
So to follow up, I mean, I think Chief Carroll can certainly show you ones that are hazards. But what leaves me a bit smarting is that we are sort of held captive to your collective whim. And take us back, I understand other communities that issues back when you have these nasty ugly storms. I look at what we were doing at Reader's Digest, pardon me, Chaco Crossing in 117. And I believe it was more of a Verizon issue than a Con Edison issue where we had a couple of poles sitting on 117 in a turn lane that we couldn't use near a high school by a new development because you didn't come and take care of it. And we sat captive to you and for how long, months? It had to be, even if it was a month, it was, it had to be a long time. We're not talking about southbound when you make a right. So we had, I think, barriers up so people didn't crash into this pole. That's just not, it's not, so when we say safety, and you happen to be here and I apologize, not you personally. Well, maybe it is, I don't know. So when you have that situation, you know, it's frustrating and I think it takes us to bring you here with possible legislation for everyone to act. And that's problematic. And the other issue too, among many, is one of the pieces of this legislation, I think, that is very helpful is that it provides for joint and sever liability. So that Con Edison can't say we did our job, Verizon say we did our job, and Altis says, oh, we didn't do our job, and then that pole stays there. So it is joint and sever liability, meaning that all of you are collectively responsible. It ensures that the job is done, the safety is preserved and it's maintained. So that no one can point the finger saying, not me, not me, not me. Because to your 16, 17-year-old driver of a car, it don't make no damn difference who's responsible for it when he crashes, God forbid. So, you know, that frustrates me and I, please pardon me, but to follow up with that, we talk about being good neighbors. And for two years, we've sat on this. In two years, I've asked Jill on multiple occasions to, you know, and Jerry Marshall, head of DPW, can we find out where we are in double poles? Can we find out where we are? And why should the town be spending time and money and effort to do something that you should be keeping us up informed? And again, while I'm rolling, and Ed, please stop me if I roll too much. But to be clear, one has nothing to do with the other, but this has to do with the principle of being cooperative. We had a contract, without going into legal disputes, that Con Edison agreed, related to work that we were doing on our sidewalks, to pay $227,000. 227, 151 and 37 cents. And Con Edison wants to pay $58,766. We have a contract, that's not, that's not, that's not a contract, that's not responsible relationships. We just put in new sidewalks. I had Jill Shapiro, our town administrator, print out some new sidewalks. New as in days, weeks, months old. And understandably, you have work to do, Con Edison and whomever, and you drilled into our sidewalks. And what did you do? You patched, I don't know if sidewalks can be beautiful per se, but you put in soft patch to fix our sidewalks that we spent a lot of money on to fix. That, to me, is probably, you know, go take a hike in Newcastle, and that's not okay. You know, we have, you know, I think there's been some reports of parking on the sidewalks, which is not the end of the world, but we have new sidewalks and new parking there. I believe there's some other things that we've had issues with is street openings, correct? Now granted, some of that is our responsibility, but where are the street opening permits? So there's so much, there's so much needs to be done. And going back to these tearing up our new sidewalks, the town code, if you think it's section 111-10, you're supposed to repair this for 15 days. Well, I assure you, it's been more than 15 days. So I'm happy to work with Con Edison, I don't think anyone, or for that matter, I'm sorry, I'm picking on Con Edison, it's everybody. But I'm happy to work, but if one of you can't tell the other, listen, I did my job, you got to do your job. And if my chief of police is showing us dangerous poles and you're destroying our new streetscape and you think it's good enough to put in soft patch, and we're getting the response time that we get when it comes to the winter storms, you're saying to Newcastle, go hike, take a hike, and only because now we're putting on legislation or considering legislation, are you considering being that much more involved? So part of my frustration, to be very clear, and Ed, tell me if I was wrong when I stated, one has nothing to do with the other, other than credibility of your position. We want to work with you, but we want to make sure that it's done right, council. You know, we want, but who is to work with you? We want to, we want to be with you because if we're not working together, we don't get anything done. But you really have to work with us. We can't constantly chase you and say, please do X, do Y. You have to take the initiative. So that's the frustration of my end. I apologize for going on a rant somewhat, but.
I certainly understand your frustrations over, you know, operational issues. If there's, we use the wrong type of patch on sidewalk, things like that.
The wrong type of patch, it's ripping up a new, brand new, months-old sidewalk. And now it's, that's what I got to be stuck with?
Yeah, that would have weeks.
Weeks, apologies, weeks, weeks.
Your weeks old.
I mean, so it's simply, this is common courtesy.
Yeah, I'm told that that's a temp patch, that's not a permanent restoration there.
The other one's two years old. When is the permanent going to be done is the point, like shouldn't that just be done right away?
We just need more communication, we need more, we need to know, people need to know, communication is important, important, being proactive is important. And some of it we can take ownership for too, but some of it we should absolutely have to not take any ownership for, you know, so.
Yeah, and I think certainly on those kinds of things, if there's a restoration that doesn't sort of meet your, with your approval, I think that's the exact type of circumstance where you reach out to the company. If we haven't met our obligations, then you should certainly let us know, point it out where and when, and we can make a plan to remediate. On the contract issue that you mentioned before.
We don't have to discuss that here, that's illegal.
Yeah, yeah.
But the point I'm trying to make is, you know, there's dispute over contracts. When we have these good neighbor policies and we have waited and waited just to pull out a pole from Verizon, get you guys off that pole that, that in the middle by a high school, why should I have to beg and ask? We all have either kids or work kids.
It's also, it also comes down to like who's subsidizing who. So, you know, we all know that there was a big settlement on the tax surcharge area that Con Edison had that the multi-towns went in and all of a sudden your share of the overall town tax basis for a number of towns went down. And now we have, you know, a discrepancy between 225,000 or 35,000 and 58,000. When there's a contract, that's, doesn't make any sense. It's just transferring the burden back onto the back of the citizens.
The contract situation is a lot more complicated. The papers that were drawn up were based on incorrect layouts. I called Mr. Ward Willis last week to try to start a conversation on that. I acknowledge that it took longer for us to respond to Mr. Ward Willis's initial letter than it should have. But I reached out to him last week, trying to get, I'm in the process of gathering information so we can have a discussion with him about that.
And it's.
But the papers that were drawn up were based on the wrong layouts, about work that was planned but not the way it was done. And that's why there's a separate issue about that, but I agree that it could be a separate issue from.
We don't have to discuss that potential issue here publicly, but I think that, call me cynical, but, you know, it's interesting that we have the double wood legislation and now we're having conversations again in terms of, you know, with Nick in terms of that particular issue. We want to, we want to be partners, but we can't be held captive to service providers. And I know the last thing that you collectively want is this to start a little bit of a fire, that's a bad term. This just to energize other communities to do the same thing. So we have to figure out what we want to do going forward, but there needs to be accountability and it can't just be that Con Edison, Verizon, for example, are off, and now we're looking at Altis because we're still in the same place we were before in theory. To us, it doesn't matter, there's still a pole. So how do we, how do you make sure that happens? Not how do we make sure it happens, how do you make sure it happens? So that's the question.
So from a Verizon perspective, you know, the full team really that does work here in this, in this local area, the town of Newcastle, is sitting right here, right? So John is the engineer, you know, I'm the manager that has responsibility over the area from an engineering perspective. And Arday Young, he's my counterpart on the operations side. So, you know, I believe, and please correct me if I'm wrong, you know, we have been very responsive, I think. You know, John, John came on board, I think, in 2018, right, somewhere in 2018.
Right, yeah, right after Tom retired.
So I think we have been responsive to the town's issues that have come before us. And we'd like to continue to do that. And this is the team that's, you know, accountable for making that happen from Verizon end.
So could we be? So can I, can I just ask a couple more questions? So you're, I'm sitting here looking at just report that you just handed out. So I'm looking at the field headers, very clear, they've got ticket number, pole owner. So you, do you have a database of all the poles in the town of Newcastle?
Yeah, the Con Edison owned poles, so.
Do you have, well, there's a whole bunch here, we've got CE West, Verizon. Um, that seems to be, and Con Edison, those seem, CE West, I don't know.
Is Con Edison, it's an abbreviation for Con Ed.
Okay. So they're basically owned either by Verizon or by Con Edison, is that correct?
Correct.
So I think it would be really helpful if what you did is in a standard format, or at least a format that I can easily make standard is give us a database of all the tolls, poles in the town of Newcastle. What I see here in front of me is.
And to be clear, by the town, you mean any, any pole, whether it's a state road or a county road?
Yeah, town, any pole in the town of, located with the town of this Newcastle, from the far west end in Osning, all the way over to the people with the Bedford PO. You know, everybody, Mount Kisco, everybody. What I see here is the place, the house number, which must be near when it's closed, the cross street, and then I see a pole number. Then I see next to go, what does next to go mean?
So next to go means the utility where the pole's in their court to either transfer from the old poles to the new pole.
Okay, great. And then the step status, what does that mean?
Step status is the next to go status.
What is NTG?
Next to go.
Next to go.
Okay. Job type, I understand. Next to go start date, I see, for example, one is 4/18/14.
So that's the date that that job has been next to go for that company?
Since that, since that date.
So someone's been waiting for five years, in other words?
Some locations have been out there for some time.
And then the age is just a calculation of the number of days since?
Correct.
Okay. So if you could give me the full database, I can match it up on pole number because Jill has the pole number here. And I can actually turn this into, I can actually find out where we are. And if there's, because I noticed that a bunch of the tickets on the next to go were actually initiated since I think we brought up this legislation. So it would be very helpful if you could give me that and then we can make sure that we have the full and complete picture of the pole. The next question I have for you is, when you have a situation where it's a Con Ed.
He's trying to slip.
Yeah, could I just respond? So this is an engines report. So this would show what's in engines and what I did here is just show who's next to go for all the Newcastle jobs. As far as the pole database that we have in Con Ed, it wouldn't be in this format. It wouldn't show any next to go information. It'll just show basically locations of poles.
But it would give me the complete pole numbers, right, all the poles?
Oh, yeah, it'll give you, it'll give you.
And it can be something you can export in either a CDS file, a.
Yeah, well, absolutely. It could be in an Excel file, but it won't show, let's say, other utilities, it won't show, you know, next to go.
That's fine.
Does your database match engines? Do you guys, do you guys agree with engines or you think you have more to your imagination?
Well, you're, so you have engines, you're in engines, that something has to happen to the pole.
So.
Right.
That's in our database.
Right.
Right.
Just their, their.
Town inventory.
So, so one is basically inventory versus one is tracking work.
Okay, and then just in terms of, I just want to make sure I have a reasonable expectation. Or we, at least we can at least come to a common consensus of what a reasonable expectation from notice is. So for example, there's a double pole, it's Con Ed pole. The first person that comes down, of course, is Con Ed. They cut the top of the pole off, leaving the rest of the utilities next door to it. And then you have the assorted utilities. What is the transfer mechanism from Con Ed to the sister utilities? And then how is that coordinated for timely removal?
Right, so we rely on the engine system for that communication. Once the Con Ed portion of the work is complete and we top the pole, a notify, email notification is sent out through the system automatically to the next attacher on the pole. So even before the work.
So even before the work begins, someone from the joint use team would go out, look at the pole and identify all the attachers and then create the ticket and enter in that order so that everyone gets notified in the right order. So when you see the next to go here, it's just showing the information from the ticket, you know, how it was entered in.
Okay, and um what is, so in that process from, cause I can see, you know, two thousand and thirty five days down to zero days within this spreadsheet, but how long then does it take a reasonable amount of time with a diligence, you know, a diligent approach, how long should it take from the time of notification to the time of removal? In coordinating all of the utilities, what is a reasonable amount of time, I'm assuming not five years?
Right. Right, 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 it it'll vary per pole location, some poles are much simpler um than other poles
Mm-hmm.
cause it's a lot less busy, a lot less equipment.
Mm-hmm.
Um so I I wouldn't know where to gauge an average um as far as the time for.
But 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 would it be three months for you, three months for the next set of utilities? Is that a reasonable expectation Verizon from the time you're notified through engines that there needs to be removal?
I I think, you know, and and Paul, you know, correct me if if you disagree.
Sure.
But you know, we were talking about, you know, a standard pole, you know, no, no, uh you know.
Transformer?
No, ju- no, no conduits, you know, coming up the poles and stuff like that, because those are the situations that make it, you know, more tricky, right?
Fair enough.
So so let's just say, you know, it's it's a standard pole, everything is aerial, um and and it's it's clean. Um you know, I would, I would say, you know, something reasonable would be, you know, what, a month? You know, for each of the utilities, right?
Right.
Upon notification?
Right, for, I would agree for a standard pole, that's not too complicated. You'll see that most of the poles that are on this list is not a standard pole and that's why they're like that.
Can I ask a question to Hodge?
Sure.
Am I understanding correctly that you don't actually keep track of how quickly, that how well you're doing, how quickly you're removing poles? You you don't, you don't track that in terms of the number of days?
No.
We could, we could run a report to determine that, to to find that information out.
So for example, three years ago, it was taking an average of ninety days or nine hundred days and today it's taking an average of some other. Is that information available, can you provide that?
Um I'd have to run a report from engines to try to get that that information out.
I I mean, one thing that I I'd be interested to hear is how we got to five hundred and what assurances you could give the board that eighty seven or or fifty seven is an eighty seven next year or a hundred and eighty seven next year, and I'd be really interested to hear what programs and resources, not just, you know, what your goals are, but what programs and resources you have in place to keep working that number down and not let it go up.
And before you answer that, along the exact same lines, you know, I'm assuming everyone's sitting here on that side of the room, you don't want us to adopt this legislation? So I'd like to hear what your proposal would be to make sure that this legislation is not actually needed. And what you sitting here and what you think the other utilities who didn't show up uh could be doing to make this legislation unnecessary for us to adopt.
Don't, without forgetting what Ed, what Ed's, what's critical word.
Yeah, yeah.
So so I I I think if I may, you know, as far as, you know, the number of days, um you know, even even if Paul was able to to publish uh that interval, um it could be not telling the 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 correct story behind it, because so for example, um you know, let's let's just say a particular pole, it took five hundred days to 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 pole. Um so so Con Ed would finish their piece, um and then there's this stuff in the middle, um whether it be C A T V or third party and we wouldn't know how long that process took and we're at the end of the line. So we're at the mercy of all those attachers that are before us to to get that final step to for it to say Verizon next to go and then we come out and, you know, we do our last piece.
Well, if if we had access to this information on a regular basis, I mean, the way the legislation is drafted now is we can, if 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 it's C A whatever the.
C A T V.
C A T V is the bottleneck between you two, your two organizations and we know the date that we've contacted you, the ticket's been issued, the days to go. If we enacted this legislation, we could specifically find C A T V. So they would be the finders because they're the bottleneck. But right now, it's just a big black hole, so and and I'm sort of surprised that I haven't really heard, like, you know, in the volunteer fire company, they've got, you know, mutual aid where, you know, there may be a lead company, whether that be Con Ed or Verizon who owns the pole, but then all the other you know, companies come in and help out, why there isn't a centralized pole team, especially when it's not electricity, if it's just fiber optics, then basically all of you guys indemnify and you hire them as a, under a mutual agreement and somebody comes and just takes, they're gonna go and show there, it seems so inefficient to me to have I get Con Ed has to do the electricity, totally get that, but then once you get into stuff that's not as much life threatening, why there isn't a company that can just take everything down at one time and basically handle.
For for us, you know, there's definitely, you know, and and it's definite, whatever you feel like, you know, you have more information on it. But so so for us, you know, we're, we have certain um labor issues, you know, which.
Oh, fair enough, that's a good enough reason, I get it.
So.
But to to Lisa's question, um what what's that, so we know at least from this municipality's perspective, this has been going on for two years. So what's, what is your plan and for the record, I did a quick, a quick look, I think thirty one of those fifty seven that you claim are still outstanding started since October one, so clearly our potential.
Number is bigger.
You know, our 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 potential installation start, kickstart this again. Um so what, to Lisa's question, what is the plan going forward to really make it happen so that we don't have to deal with this every year?
So can I, can I just speak to that, Les, the other thing that we're not really taking into consideration from our perspective is all the storm hardening work that we've done in this area. So those jobs may have been done as part of bigger projects. We've, we've taken the Newcastle loop and split it up, which means we've set a lot of new poles. Uh you guys have probably seen rows and rows of new poles, that's all storm hardening work. Um the other thing with that is there's a clock on every single pole, but when you get into a big project, that takes longer just because of the way we do our work, we dig the holes, we set the poles, we frame the poles, we pull rope and we pull wire and so on and so forth, so that that delays everything, that's just the way that the work goes. Then once that job is closed out, we refer that to the utilities.
It's, I don't understand what you're saying, I apologize. Are you, are you saying that if you um have addressed these poles as a part of storm hardening, they wouldn't be closed out only in the engines?
No, what I'm saying is some of those poles may encompass a bigger job. So just because they've been done since October first, I talked to the contract management group, they're working currently on the Newcastle loop split. They're creating two different main feeds into this town, so there's a lot of pole replacements associated with those two jobs. So as they're working, they're gonna go and they're gonna remove those.
So you're saying it's not just as a result of this legislation?
I'm just saying, it may not be, I don't, I'm not saying yes or no either way.
Not all of it.
It's not, but not always.
But there is a ton, there is a ton of infrastructure going into this town right now.
So we've been talking about this for forty five minutes and there's, I kind of feel like we've just been going in circles, there's been no discussion about what might be done so that we're not enacting this legislation, so I'd really love to hear that from somebody.
So so I mean, I I think, you know, a couple of things, one is that, you know, the prior to to engines and and engines is a relatively new tool. Um and and the purpose of engines was to bridge the gap in communication between the utilities. Um and I think that, you know, since engines has come on board, although there's been growing pains through, you know, between the utilities in terms of communication, you know, we've gotten better, you know. Is is there room to 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 get better at at that, you know, in terms of response between the utilities, absolutely, there's no doubt, right? Uh but I I think the numbers do show that between, you know, the the Con Ed's efforts, um I can't speak for C A T V, but internally for for Verizon, our efforts, you know, I think, you know, we see not just in this community, but in others that the the double wood numbers have been reduced significantly. Um I think, you know, from from a Verizon perspective, you know, we we anticipate that we will continue in that, you know, that the that that road where we're we're paying attention to double woods. Um and I think, um you know, the the communication between, you know, us and Con Ed and other utilities will only improve as as we go down the road and also, as as I stated earlier on, if there is anything that is, you know, urgent, um for whatever reason, um you know, safety concerns or whatever, let us know. This is the team that that that.
And the response, we had, we had Ted on one seventeen and and Maury Brook Road for a long time with.
Understood, understood.
So that's a great example.
Understood.
And and by the way, uh I I will not profess to speak for our chief of police, but uh he did a quick cursory look at this and he thinks that three of five of the poles that we identified as problematic poles at least are not on your list. So I question the, when I say veracity, not that it's intentional nonetheless, but I I I I question.
Right, the completeness.
The completeness of it, if he's seeing three to three out of out of five.
Yeah.
Uh that's a problem, so if you can't identify your double poles, again, why is it my, why is it our burden?
Right, which is why I think it would be useful if what you could give us is a master database of all poles in town. And then what we can do is we can take that and put it up against our original list and we can, you know, at a certain point, if there are any poles in dispute that our list says it's not done, your list, it's not showing up in your engines, we give you those poles and somebody on your team go out and check it and then confirm done or not done. And then if it's not done, update the engines list. So that, you know, everything is sort of centralized and the engines program at least gives us a sense of when the ticket was put in and which utility is liable for the next step and who's holding the process up. So maybe even on a quarterly basis, if that engines list, once we have a confirmed kind of number, um it's said to Jill, we can kind of keep an eye on it.
Yeah, I I do think that that would be really helpful and I would actually go one step further as opposed to quarterly, I'd really like it monthly because monthly gives us an an opportunity to sense a pattern and to see what's going on. I fully understand that, you know, the storm season comes, it runs from hurricane season straight through, you know, April, May, I I get it. We lived through the downtown infrastructure project, you know, we were, you know, you guys were front and center and until we couldn't be because of the storms and stuff like that, we completely get it, but it would give us an indication as to what's going on and be able to be responsive and frankly, help you with priorities. Um so if we could get a copy of the engines list uh monthly, it would help us.
Well, I think what we said.
Assuming it's accurate.
Yeah, we, I think what we need to do is agree on what's really outstanding and then potentially you guys could meet with Jill and you guys could work out a timeframe to get it done. You know, a reasonably expedited timeframe. Because right now, it's sort of like we put it on good faith and yet, you know, our own data tells us a different story, you know. And I think if we could agree on the facts of what's outstanding, then that would be the beginning of the story that we start this time and try and get it right.
And I would think that maybe in addition to sending the information over, it would also be helpful to have a narrative for those that have been open for longer than.
A thousand days?
No, more, less. More than a year?
Yeah.
I I would think at a minimum.
Anything more than three hundred and sixty five days?
This just jumps out at you, lies two thousand, thirty five days, by seventeen hundred days.
So.
There's there's gotta be a reason, right, there there's gotta be a reason, if it's two thousand days, there's gotta be a reason, so.
I don't know if I don't, as also, I think that if we can figure out how to, we'd all rather work together, no one's, no one looking to stick it to anybody uh by any stretch of the imagination, but with a complete list, an accurate list, a plan going forward, you know, and and to what Ed had pointed out, to make sure it doesn't reoccur and then additionally, um how you're going to hold each other accountable, because Verizon can't tell Con Edison what to do and and down the line, so you know, it doesn't matter to me if it's Con Ed, when I say me, the community, whether it's Con Ed, it's Verizon or Altice, it just has to get done. Um you know, so that joint responsibility, how are you gonna make that happen, that's important. Uh and then just generally speaking, we wanna make sure that we have a good relationship with all the providers and more specifically because it's power Con Edison in terms of, you know, making sure that uh when the next storm comes, because it will, you know, we are, just like everyone else, serviced properly. Um so that's it and.
While we have you here, it's not a double pole thing.
Yes.
Thing, since you're all here, when you leave and make a left on North Greeley right here, or Greeley Avenue right here, South Greeley, um you should all look at the low wires that are hanging across the street, figure out whose that is and fix them. Cause they're really low and if a tall truck goes past there, they're gonna knock them all down.
Or someone's gonna throw their shoes up there.
Well, that that's true, but but they're really low. So in three, three different spots, I think, so as you drive out, take a look and see whose they are and somebody needs to fix them.
Yeah, I I don't know if they're electric, but because it would seem odd if they're so low, but they're really like.
They're very low, so.
I'm thinking it's Verizon, but I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Say in North Greeley?
South, well, just make a left, it's south.
I'm sorry, South Greeley, right here.
Just make a left, you'll see.
Like I could hit them with a football and I can't do that well.
I have a nice one, though. I'll come by tomorrow too during the day, I'll take a look down, I'll take a ride by.
But I also just wanna say the fact that you all made the effort to show up does count. Thank you.
I have to tell you that our downtown is.
It really does, it really does.
Did you, did you, did you take a look?
Yes, very nice, very nice.
Yeah. It was really, good job.
But it also followed with with Chief, because again, he probably just goes five by themselves, three out of five are not.
It's just, just an idea, I took pictures of five problem poles for the um public hearing and so I just, I just checked that list and again, three of the five are not on there, so I you know, I don't know how you came up with the list, you know, but maybe we can communicate, at least give you those other three.
Yeah.
You you wanna give us those.
Sure.
There's others that must exist too.
To you, to you just do the right math, the terms of the two of them.
Yeah, so I'm I'm, anyone else, we all, I mean.
Just just one of us, one, one.
We could see the, we could see the stuff.
In the photos, we've seen them, that they've been cut already.
But so why wouldn't they, they still be in engines?
They should have been, yeah.
They should be in engines, so that's what we're gonna follow up with.
That's why.
So even if we can look at the list and you can tell me that.
So if you can give us those three addresses, that would be great.
Yeah, definitely. Well, we're, we're.
Yeah.
I I will just add, if if you do find a location like that, notify us immediately and we'll take a look, because I, my assumption is most of those singular jobs are done on emergency and those are the ones that, it is no excuse whatsoever, but those are the ones that are done
They not get in.
at two A M, cause someone hit a pole and guys.
But I gotta ask that you guys do that, because you can't, my my chief of mine, I'm sorry, I use that term, our chief of police, he's got a lot more important things to do.
No, no, I'm saying if you see something that that's bothering, notify us immediately and we'll, we'll definitely get it into the system.
No, 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 he's saying, yeah.
Well, I mean, what I said is, once we have the master database, we compare that against what you've got in engines versus what we have as incomplete. I'll give you the list of unrecorded telephone poles and if somebody from, split it up between you or one of you takes it on, just go and verify whether or not that's complete or not and then send us a notification, because I think at a minimum, we need to have an accurate log of the status of the pole.
The, I'm sorry, I'll just say one thing, on the the listing that you have, the next to go start date that's shown there
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
is really when the notify, not email notification gets sent out of engines to a utility.
Totally fair.
Yeah, so the ticket might have been there for some time before, but every time that email goes out, it resets the clock and starts over.
Okay, so the two oh three five is the cumulative days and the start date is the notification to the next utility?
Correct.
Okay, that makes sense.
Holly knows her numbers, don't mess with Holly.
All right, thank you all for coming.
Thank you so much, everyone, thank you.
So much and uh be in touch.
Should I get this?
So you got a point.
You getting the list for Paul?
Yeah, I made it.
Um. We did, we need to make a motion to come out. Yeah, I I, no, 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 I moved to go into executive. Second, all favor.